All right, Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We're here for a number of bills this morning. I'm Eric Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. To my right, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District Member of the Committee, and Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District. To my immediate right, Trey, staff to the Committee. We have representatives from the Mayor's Office and the Council President's Office. We will start off with 24- oh, let me take a step back. So we do not have a quorum today, so we are not going to vote on any of these bills. A number of these bills will be rescheduled for a voting session for next Tuesday, November 19th, and I will note those at the end of each hearing. So first up, Council Bill 24-0598, rezoning 1223 through 1229 Argyle Avenue. Let's start off with the Law Department on this one. We are approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Let's jump to Planning Commission next.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Eric Tiso. For the Planning Commission, this bill was reviewed in their public meeting last week on the 7th, and the Planning Commission recommended an amendment to an alternate district of IMU 1 and approval on that basis. In essence, this is allowing the community to get what they need to process the indigo crops that they are doing and to sell it without adding the additional possible non-compatible uses that the I-1 district would provide as drafted. They were accepting of that in the Planning Commission meeting, and we hope that with that amendment, the Council will move it forward.
Thank you. Some Planning Commission's in support, correct? Okay, next up, DHCD.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jason Wright, representing the Department of Housing and Community Development. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. BMZA?
Colonel Schnella, Mayor's Office. BMZA refers to defers to the Planning Commission.
Thank you. BDC?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Tom Welly. On behalf of BDC, we stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. DOT?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Luciana Deas with DOT. We have no objection.
Thank you. Parking Authority?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Christmas Age Parking Authority. We stand by our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Zachary Wollman, Equity Policy Analyst for the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. The OECR has no objection to City Council Bill 24-0598. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, we will go into recess on this hearing. We will reconvene on this one on November 19th at 10:02 a.m. Next up, there was a hearing scheduled for 24-0577, zoning conditional use parking lot, principal use 1032 Homewood Avenue. That hearing has been canceled. Next up, Council Bill 24-0596, sale of property, 1400 Lenon Hall Street. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DHCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, Jason Wright, representing DHCD. We respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
Thank you. Planning?
No objection from Planning.
Thank you. Public Works?
Alejandra Ivanovich, representing the Department of Public Works. We have no objection.
Thank you. Transportation?
DOT has no objection.
Office of Equity and Civil Rights?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Office of Equity and Civil Rights stands by. It's no recommendation on City Council Bill 24-0596.
Real Estate?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Christine Griffin, with Department of Real Estate. We stand by our favorable report.
Thank you. Finance? Not opposed?
Correct.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter? This hearing is now in recess, and we will reconvene on November 19th at 10:03 a.m. Next up, Council Bill 24-0597, city property renaming Riverside Park Pool to the Congressman Elijah E. Cummings Community Pool. I will reserve brief introductory remarks on this matter, which I introduced until November 19th. In the interim, Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Department of Finance, not opposed?
Correct.
I hope that means that Department of Finance is gonna make sure that Wreckin' Parks has some money to put up some new signs befitting of something that's been renamed in the honor of Congressman Cummings?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Baltimore City Wreckin' Parks? Favorable?
Yes.
Thank you. Planning Commission, favorable? Favorable. Thank you. Real Estate, favorable?
Favorable.
BDC, favorable?
Favorable.
Department of Transportation, favorable?
Favorable.
Excellent. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Seeing that there are none, this hearing is now in recess and will reconvene for a voting session on November 19th at 10:04 a.m. Next up, Council Bill 24-0580, rezoning 901 Asquith Street. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Law Department approves the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. DHCD? Favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair. We stand behind our favorable report.
Thank you. Planning Commission, favorable?
Yes, favorable.
Thank you. BDC, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Department of Transportation, no objection?
No objection.
Thank you. BMZA, defers to planning?
Yes.
Thank you. Parking Authority, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, are there any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, Mr. Wollman, this is your bill. If you could just confirm for me that you have a findings of fact that have been submitted that the Council will consider on second reader?
That is correct, Mr. Chair. For the record, Joe Wollman, Silverman Thompson, on behalf of the applicant, we provided a memo to the Planning Commission, which is part of the report in your file. It includes a findings of fact.
Excellent. Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for Mr. Wollman? Seeing that there are none, this hearing is now in recess and will be reconvened for a voting session on November 19th at 10:05 a.m. Next up, 24-0600, conditional use of a single-family dwelling unit to three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 2106 McCullough Street. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DHCD, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Fire Department, no objection?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Planning Commission, favorable?
Favorable.
Thank you. BMZA, defers to planning? Mr. Schnella, BMZA, defers to planning?
Yes.
Thank you. BDC, favorable?
Favorable.
Thank you. DOT, no objection?
No objection.
Thank you. Office of Equity and Civil Rights, no objection?
Yes.
Thank you. Parking Authority, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter? Seeing that there are none, this hearing is now in recess. This bill will be called back to order on November 19th at 10:06 a.m. for a voting session. Next up, Council Bill 24-0517, rezoning 1500, 1502, and 1508 De Soto Road. Law Department?
We approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Planning Commission?
Planning Commission recommended that it be amended to add 1504 De Soto Road, and with that recommends approval.
Thank you. And just to confirm, there is written consent from the property owner at 1504 to be rezoned.
Yes, Mr. Wollman provided a notarized letter of that property owner accepting being included to the Planning Commission hearing.
Excellent. And there will be, I believe your office is working with Legislative Reference to ensure there's an amendment that is prepared for the November 19th.
Yes, sir. We apologize for that delay. We couldn't get our GIS folks. Luckily, Mr. Wollman had the plats that he's handed in, so we just need to get you the text amendments quickly.
Thank you. DHCD, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. BDC, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DOT, no objection?
No objection.
Thank you. BMZA, defers to planning?
Yes.
Thank you. Parking Authority, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, Mr. Wollman, I know this is your bill. You've got written consent, as Mr. Tiso described, which has been notarized for 1504. Is that correct?
That is correct, and as in the case with the earlier bill, we provided a memorandum of the Planning Commission regarding a findings of fact, which is part of the bill file as well. Also like to indicate for the record that we received a written letter of support from the Royal Park. Community Association like to thank Councilwoman Porter for her assistance in this matter, and I neglected to thank Councilman Stokes, who worked with us very closely on the 901A Asquith rezoning bill as well. Said for the record, I just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wollman. Colleagues, any questions for Mr. Wollman? Seeing that there are none, Ms. Rully, we, just to confirm, we do not have any type of posting issues related to this bill?
That's my understanding.
With the proposed amendment, correct?
That's my understanding.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Seeing that there are none, this hearing is now in recess. This bill will be reconvened on November 19th at 10:07 a.m. Next up, Council Bill 24-0496, zoning conditional use conversion of single-family dwelling units to three dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, variances 2904, 2910, and 2914 Parkwood Avenue. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And my understanding is there is an amendment to include a variance for gross floor area, correct? And Planning Commission, or Planning Department, that is something that you are supportive of for Planning Commission?
Yes, sir. That was included in our staff report to the Commission, and they recommend favorable.
Excellent. And your team is working with Legislative Reference on having that amendment drafted up in advance?
We will.
Excellent. Thank you. And while we're there, Planning Commission is favorable?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. DHCD, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Fire Department, not opposed?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. BMZA, defers to planning?
Yes.
Thank you. BDC, no objection?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DOT, no objection?
No objection.
Thank you. Parking Authority, favorable?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Thank you. Seeing as there are none, this hearing is now in recess and will be reconvened on November 19th at 10:08 a.m. for a voting session. Next up, Council Bill 23-0455, zoning, conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to four dwelling units in the R8 zoning district, 1127 North Caroline Street. Law Department approved for form and legal sufficiency?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DHCD? DHCD?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Well, we respectfully stand behind our favorable bill report.
That's the yes I was looking for. Thank you. Fire Department, not opposed?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Fire Department, your excuse for the day. Thank you. Planning Commission, favorable?
Favorable.
Thank you. BMZA?
They stand behind their bill report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. BDC, no objection?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. DOT?
DOT has no objection.
Thank you. Parking Authority?
Thank you. We request a favorable bill report?
Thank you. Colleagues, any questions for our city agencies? Seeing that there are none, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today? Seeing that there are none, this hearing is now in recess and will be reconvened on November 19th. Let me pause. Councilman Stokes?
I just want to talk about Caroline Street real quick.
Please.
So that was an old funeral home, Elliott's Funeral Home, and it's been vacant for a long time. And to see somebody come into the city and rehab that building to a four apartment, single apartment, so I truly support it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, at least we're not building the crematorium there. Excellent. That's next week. Okay. So any other comments or questions from our colleagues? Seeing that there are none, there are no members of the public who wish to testify on this matter today. Seeing that there are none, this hearing is now in recess and will be reconvened for a voting session on Tuesday, November 19th at 10:09 a.m. Last bill, Council Bill 24-0608, real property tax, affordable and inclusionary housing, mandatory reporting. Law Department?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hillary Rully, on behalf of the Law Department, we did not approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency because it seeks to amend a section of the Baltimore City Code that no longer exists. It had already sunsetted. So my understanding is there'll be a set of amendments to address that and perhaps some other issues, and we'll take a look at those and see if they fix the issues.
Thank you. And I trust that Law Department will be working with the Council President's Office and Legislative Reference throughout that process to ensure those amendments are heading in the form of receiving approval for form and legal sufficiency, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Housing Authority?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jason Wright, representing...
Housing Authority?
My apologies.
You gotta come up, you gotta hit the button on the mic, tell me your name, who you're with, and what you're doing. Please and thank you, ma'am.
Hi, good morning. I'm Crystal Highplan. I work with the Housing Authority of Baltimore City. We defers to the Legal Department, the Law Department, I'm sorry.
Law Department. Very good. Thank you, ma'am. DHCD?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Jason Wright, representing the Department of Housing and Community Development. We respectfully stand behind our unfavorable bill report, and I can go into some of the reasons why. Please.
Yep, please do.
We shared in the Law Department's concerns about legal sufficiency. Also, city law currently requires, already requires, the Commissioner to report to the Mayor and City Council annually about both affordable housing and the inclusionary housing programs. We would also contend that the Department of Planning is not involved with affordable housing pilots, nor are they in an appropriate position to submit a joint report to the City Council. These additional reporting requirements and submissions to the Council may also cause process delays and have a chilling effect on the development of future affordable housing and inclusionary housing projects. Of those reporting requirements proposed in 61A through F and 62A through C of the bill, many of which we feel are unreasonable and burdensome and are duplicative of some of the processes that DHCD's current activities recall, and of our current activities and require additional staff. For instance, required documentation for the Council would include a property inspection report of the qualifying development. This is redundant. All residual rental units in Baltimore City are required to be registered, inspected, and licensed to ensure that they meet basic safety and maintenance requirements. The Council... The Council would require documentation of a security plan. It is unclear why we would hold these projects to a different standard than other residential rental units in Baltimore City. DHC does not have a, does not have security professionals on staff and is not in a position to determine what would be an acceptable security plan on a project-by-project basis. DHCD, in conjunction with BPD, is committed to enforcing all applicable laws in order to promote the health and safety of our communities throughout the city of Baltimore. This bill also requires the submission of a history of calls for public safety service in the 36 months preceding the pilot request. While this information may be possible to pull, it is unclear what purpose it will serve. All tenants and property owners are expected to adhere to city, state, and federal law. This bill also requires the submission of documentation to the Council of the planned accessibility improvements to units for residents with disabilities. It's unclear why this is included in the bill. The Americans with Disabilities Act requires reasonable accommodations, which include these modifications to living spaces. The bill requires the submission of a maintenance and capital project plan. The Building, Fire, and Related Codes of Baltimore City and the International Property Maintenance Code regulate the minimum maintenance requirements for basic equipment, light, ventilation, heating, sanitation, and fire safety. DHCD's Code Enforcement Section can currently issue notices and citations for sanitation and maintenance concerns on all properties. Maintenance is not unique to affordable housing and inclusionary housing. It is unclear why this documentation requirement is included in the bill. Additionally, affordable housing and inclusionary housing projects often require a combination of federal, state, and local subsidies. It is unclear how the documentation of the capital project plan should be presented to the Council. DHCD defers to the Department of Finance on the appropriateness of this request. Additionally, the bill requires the analysis of any applicable sections of the zoning code that may impact the qualifying, qualifying the development. DHCD defers to the Department of Planning on the appropriateness of this requirement. Plans are already reviewed during the design and review and permitting process. It is unclear why this requirement is included in the bill. Finally, for projects involving vacant structures or new construction, an environmental report for the proposed site is required. This requirement is vague, and it is unclear what the proposed environmental report should include. The BFRC and the permitting review process should already include environmental review and other considerations.
Thank you. Certainly appreciate that. I had a chance to just scan through some of the additional detail in the report. Certainly appreciate DHCD's position on this. I will say that there are some points that are made in here, I think, which may go a little far in terms of questioning the legislative intent. What I'd like to see happen before next Tuesday is if you specifically can work with the Council President's Office to have a more in-depth conversation, because I think you'll, you'll find that the legislative intent behind this initiative might make a little more sense if you have a more in-depth conversation. So I'm certain that we can work through some of these things in the coming weeks. So, Mr. Schnella, can I count on Mr. Wright here to reach out to Mr. DeGraffin Wright today to get something set up for tomorrow or Thursday to start having these conversations?
I think the Council President's Office can reach out to the Administration, certainly to talk about how, what can be done with the bill. I won't put that on DHCD specifically. I think, I think that's for the Council President's Office to reach out to the Administration to discuss.
Okay. Well, that's, it's a little uncustomary in here when the Chair asks an agency to reach out to someone. So let me put it this way. The Council President's Office will reach out to Mr. Wright today, and I not only hope but expect an immediate response from Mr. Wright to have those conversations starting today. Does that, does that work for everyone?
Yeah, but it needs to come through MoGR. The Council President's Office should work through us, and then we'll make sure that they have a conversation with DHCD. Yes, Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeGraffin Wright, if you could come up, please?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Aaron DeGraffin Wright for the Council President's Office. So, yes, we've reached out to the Administration, MoGR, about the Administration's concerns with respect to this bill and the goals of the bill. I'm not sure if Mr. Wright has been in the loop on those emails, so we'll make sure that we communicate, bring everybody together, so that we are prepared with the necessary amendments on, by the time we get to next week, Tuesday.
Thank you so much, Mr. DeGraffin Wright. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Department of Planning?
Unfortunately, we are also opposed, aside from Law Department's concerns, while we certainly have an informed opinion on the zoning code, if a legal conclusion or a formal interpretation of zoning is required, that has to come from the zoning administrator, which is under DHCD. So we would suggest amending planning out and replace with zoning administrator to get that appropriate report if you need a legal conclusion. Otherwise, we're happy to consult as needed.
Thank you. I would assume that DHCD's final position is inclusive of any position that the zoning administrator may or may not have. Let me ask the Law Department that.
Well, I think under the code, the zoning administrator would give the opinion about the zoning, but I'm not sure that it is something they talked to DHCD agency about, since they're a, you know, the zoning board is created by state law and is a separate entity, so I'm not sure how that works.
But we were talking about the zoning administrator, not the zoning board, correct?
True, but I'm just not sure, while, whatever agency they're housed under, I, my understanding is they're giving their own report. They're not running it through the Commissioner, but that's just my understanding.
Got it. duly noted. Chap? No objection?
No objection. They have no role here.
Thank you. Finance?
Hey, good morning. Bob Sennemy, representing Department of Finance. So just a little bit of background on this. The state law allows the city, via the Board of Estimates, to grant pilots, you know, payments in lieu of taxes on certain projects. In this case, we're speaking of affordable housing product, projects. There's a committee that meets to review these, so HCD gathers the information and brings it to a committee that includes HCD, Finance, Real Estate Office, and representatives from the Comptroller's Office and City Council's Office, City Council President's Office. You know, when granting a pilot, Finance's view of this and interest in this is making sure that we, that the pilot is necessary, that we're getting all the tax revenue that's, that's, that we can out of these projects. And I can say, from having served on the committee for about two years now, Finance feels like that the information that is provided is adequate to make the financial decision of whether a pilot is reasonable or not. Now, the bill, though, gets into these additional reporting requirements, and we do think that they are, they are a little bit of excessive. We think that there's a lot of information that's provided by HCD to the pilot committee that makes us feel comfortable that we're ready to bring those projects to the board. A couple things in specific, some of which HCD mentioned, is the security plan, the environmental report, and then this request for calls for public safety services over the last 36 months. We're not clear exactly what that does to move the project forward or why that information is needed. Again, from our standpoint, we feel comfortable that if we're granting a pilot, that we've seen all versions of the financials and understand that it's, the request is reasonable. So on that basis, we also had an unfavorable report, because we think that those additional requirements probably would go as far as requiring us to have some additional resource, whether that's in Finance or HCD, to gather all that information for all the pilot agreements that go to the board. And there's probably, in my experience, there's, you know, one a month or so. I mean, we've signed off on multiple ones over the past year that I've been involved in. So the, the reporting requirements are not insignificant. It's a lot of data that has to be gathered that could jeopardize the timing of some of these, these projects. So that's our, our position, and happy to take any questions.
One quick question. The affordable housing pilot packages that are submitted to the Board of Estimates for final approval, are those shared with the City Council?
I do not think they are today. They go directly to the Board of Estimates.
What's the Administration's position on sharing those packages with the Council?
Yeah, man, I think we'd want to discuss. If it's the package itself, there's already a package that has to be put together that a package that has to be put together that goes to the Board of Estimates, so that information is available. I think what we're referring to is the additional requirements that would go, go into that.
I totally understood. I think I'm getting at what's driving the legislative intent here.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think understood.
Okay. That may be something that the administration considers discussing before next Tuesday. Okay. Colleagues, of which there are none left, so there are no further questions, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this matter? Seeing that there are none, Mr. DeGraffin Wright, anything else you want to add on[1764.83]